...meeting this evening, the first item on the agenda is roll call.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
Alderman Randolph.
Here.
Alderwoman Jones.
Here.
Alderwoman Turnbull.
Here.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Here.
Alderman Maloney.
Here.
Alderman Rousey.
Here.
We have a coro.
So do we have all the mics on?
Yep.
Yep.
Yes.
Awesome. The next item is the pledge of allegiance, so please stand for the pledge of allegiance and please remain standing until we have a moment of silent prayer for our men and women in the military as well as our public safety officers. And since we have the Nelson, Pastor Nelson's children with us, we're gonna allow them to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, so get us started.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very, very much, you may be seated. And also keep the flood victims in mind in Texas, that should also be a part of our prayer request as well. The next area is the approval of tonight's agenda, is there a motion?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
Make a motion to approve tonight's agenda as printed.
Thank you, is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Turnbull.
I second.
Thank you, been moved and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so tonight's agenda has been approved. The next area is the approval of the regular session on June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Make a motion, we approve the regular session minutes of June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five as printed and presented.
Thank you, is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
I'll second.
Thank you, been moved and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so the regular session minutes from June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five have been approved. The next set of minutes is the special regular session on July first, twenty-twenty-five, is there a motion?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Turnbull.
I move that we approve the special regular session minutes of July first, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you, is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
I'll second.
Thank you, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so the regular session minutes, special regular session minutes from July first, twenty-twenty-five have been approved. The next area is awards, presentation, organizational business, and we have a couple of items here. And if you would put up the pictures for Ward One, that would be awesome. There is the picture for Ward One, and that is the Givens home. And I have on very good authority, very good authority, that Ms. Florida Givens is the one who's responsible for all this work. Even though Mr. Willie is around, she does the work, so just for the record. So would you be so kind as come on up? I appreciate it. For Ward One, no, 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 Ms. Florida Two. You have to.
The gardener.
Thank you. And for Ward Two, we have at one-thirty-two, twelve-fifteenth, and that's Gloria and James, are they here? Gloria is, come on up, thank you very much, and there is the picture of, yes, there it is, it looks familiar, right? It looks good, we appreciate you. And for Ward Three, we have Isabel and looks like Bianca, are they here?
They were not able to attend.
They were not able to attend, okay. So we are going to get the opportunity to recognize Ward One and Ward Two for all of your hard work. Let's give them a round of applause. And this is, this is the opportunity we have. Ward Two, thank you very much. Ward One, okay, I know, I know, I know who should be receiving it. Once again, congratulations and thank you, thank you, thank you. It's always nice to see how the residents are taking very good care of their homes, so we like to go through that process. But now, just for the record, Ms. Emily sitting over there has a lot to do with you being selected. So you definitely need to make sure, yes, yes, so she, she did her homework and went around and looked at all the homes and yours was selected, so once again, thank you, thank you, thank you for what you do. And Mama, you got a good one here, good son, because, because he gave you, because he gave, he gave you credit for the work. Job well done, congratulations, absolutely, thank you, appreciate it. And you know, it is an awesome opportunity to do all we can to continue to have the city look fantastic, and we do appreciate that. And now we have a proclamation for Pastor Nelson, he's here with First Lady Cheryl and their kids and, and and mother, okay, the ones that got this started. So will the Nelson family come on up? Come on down or whatever the proper term is. This is good. This is Pastor Nelson at First Baptist Grandview, and First Baptist Grandview was first started when? You remember? Eighteen forty-eight, before the city of Grandview. Before Grandview was incorporated as a city, First Baptist Grandview existed. Not many folks know that. That is pretty amazing to know that the church, the beacon on the hill on Main Street, was here before that happened. So that's pretty amazing and pretty awesome all by itself, so. We have a proclamation here, and as we go through this process, just so you are aware, one of the things we do is as we select a civic leader of the year, they are the ones, not only the civic leader, but we also have typically a function with Missouri Municipal League where you are recognized, and I think I sent that information to you and First Lady Cheryl in an email, that's coming up. And also for Harry Haydays, the Grand Marshal is also the civic leader of the year. So you'll have an opportunity to represent the city of Grandview at Harry Haydays Parade through that process. And Pastor Nelson is no stranger to Harry Haydays because First Baptist Grandview does amazing volunteer work on Harry Haydays. And I've seen you out there as well, you know, helping out, so have the girls been out there helping out as well? Awesome, well, we appreciate that. So here's the proclamation, Pastor. By the way, is he a good son? Okay. Well, okay, all right, just thought I'd ask, you know, it's, parents will tell the truth, you know, so that's, that's a good thing. All right, the proclamation reads as follows, whereas the mayor and the Board of Aldermen in the city of Grandview, Missouri, annually select as the annual civic leadership award a Grandview resident who has earned the respect and admiration of the Grandview community for their untiring efforts in improving the quality of life in the community. And whereas Pastor Michael Nelson contribution to the Grandview community include some but not all, okay? First Baptist Church have a longstanding clothes closet that has served the community of Grandview for years, offer a prom dress giveaway serving over three hundred ladies annually, and have a food pantry serving the residents of Grandview. And whereas First Baptist Church works with the schools through caring for kids, hold monthly services at the village at Carroll Manor Nursing Home, hosts the children's area at Harry Haydays, and holds vacation Bible school every summer. And whereas Pastor Nelson and his church hold a fall festival, support the Grandview Assistance Program, and host backyard Bible clubs at Oak Tree Square Apartments. Pastor Nelson is involved in the Longview Funeral Home leading funeral services for families without a church. Pastor Nelson assists struggling churches in the area through the revitalization process as they seek to overcome their decline and reignite a renewed vision for the future. And whereas Pastor Nelson serves as an adjunct professor as well as takes on interns to serve within his church at First Baptist Grandview. Pastor Nelson is working on putting together a counseling program to serve the community, starting conversations with Flour's Furniture Bank, and hopes to facilitate practical living type classes to help serve members of the community. Pastor Nelson and his wife, First Lady Cheryl, live in Grandview where they are raising their three awesome children. Now therefore I, Leonard D. Jones, Mayor of the City of Grandview, Missouri, do hereby proclaim Pastor Michael Nelson as the civic leader awardee for the year twenty-twenty-five, and do hereby express the heartfelt appreciation of the citizens of Grandview to Pastor Nelson and First Lady Cheryl and his family on this occasion. The Board of Aldermen recognized Pastor Nelson as a great ambassador for the city of Grandview who has given selfishly to the community, sharing his time and talents to help others in need. Signed in the city of Grandview, Missouri, the eighth day of July, twenty-twenty-five, Leonard Jones, Mayor, and attested by Melissa Pate, City Clerk. Congratulations. And Pastor, any comments you'd like to give us?
Thank you very much, it's an honor to, to have this award. Mayor Jones showed up on my doorstep a couple months ago as I was out in the yard doing some work, and we had a good conversation, and it's an honor to be able to be a part of the city, honored to be able to serve through First Baptist Church, and to have been a part of the community for as long as we've had, we've been here ten and a half years or so now, and thankful for the community and thankful for you all, so thank you.
Absolutely, fantastic, and just so you know, Pastor Nelson is like Jericho. He runs around the community seven times, and I don't know if walls fall, but, but he's praying as he jogs around the community. And I've seen all five of you go around the community, and we appreciate you guys, this is, you know, we appreciate you guys just being there, so thank you very, very much. First Lady Cheryl, anything you would like to add? All right, absolutely. Mama Nelson, nope, okay, once again, let's give them a round of applause. Pastor Nelson and family, thank you, have a good one. We appreciate you, all right, and stay right there because the board wants to recognize you guys, okay? Sandra, would you start and come around? You guys have a good one, thank you very, the Nelson family. And we have one more item under the proclamation and the awards and so forth, we have Chief, you would like to come? This is Chief Bowman. Chief Bowman has, he's, he's back from vacation, so he is excited to be here now.
Can everybody hear me? I recognize you guys, Chief Wes Young. Chief Young started with us twenty years ago, November, he served at Alderman Fire Department, Fire Lieutenant today, to engineers, to patent analysis chief, he also served as a fire investigator, he put him on light fighter, fighter, and he served as the fire chief in the city of Holy Wellington for three years. And he got promoted on the first of July to Assistant Chief, Chief Young.
Got to get back to my notes here. The next area is public comment, anyone who'd like to address the Board of Aldermen, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address, you have three minutes to address the Board of Aldermen, when you finish, you do sign in with our city clerk, Melissa Pate on my left, your right, the time is seven sixteen, I declare public comment open. I need to hurry up to the mic, yes, ma'am.
My name's Allison Youngblood, I'm a registered nurse and I live in Grandview, and I was driving by that
Getting a little closer to the mic.
Sorry, I live at one, I live near like one-fortieth and seventy-one, and Crown Realty has that spot that's open. So I was gonna reach out to Aldi with like a plan, so, because we have a huge food desert, and when that Dollar General was shut down from the car, I think drove into it or something, or I don't know, they had to remodel it. But I saw so many people walking long distances in the heat to get their groceries to the other Dollar General. So I feel like we need more walkability in a grocery store that's closer to our neighborhoods. So is there anything I need to know or could be helpful for me in convincing Aldi to maybe buy that property and build an Aldi there?
Awesome, awesome. Check in and we will get back in touch with you, okay?
That's all.
So provide your, your name, address, and your email there, and yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? The time is seven seventeen, I declare public comment closed. We have no public hearings today. Is there a motion for consent item F?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Make a motion to we approve consent item F as printed and presented.
Thank you, is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
Second.
Thank you, been moved and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so consent, consent item F has been approved, is there a motion to approve consent item G?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
I make a motion to notify of a closed session to be called by the mayor at a regular session to be held on Tuesday, July eighth, twenty-twenty-five, at City Hall, twelve-hundred Main Street, the closed session will be called for Tuesday, July eighth, twenty-twenty-five, in City Hall at twelve-hundred Main Street immediately following the regular session at seven PM. The closed session will have closed record and will be scheduled for the purpose of discussing the specific item noted below for which there may be a vote. Number one, legal actions, causes of action or litigation, and any confidential privileged communications between the city or its representatives and its attorneys.
Roll call, please.
We need a second.
Just a second.
Oh, oh, who's the second? Alderwoman Jones. Thank you very much, roll call, please.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderwoman Jones. Alderwoman Turnbull.
Aye.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
The next area is ordinances, is there a motion on bill number seven-eight-five-five?
Mayor.
Alder, Alderman Randolph.
Move the bill number seven-eight-five-five be placed on its first reading.
Thank you, is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Turnbull.
I second.
Thank you.
Bill number seven-eight-five-five, an ordinance authorizing payment to Motorola Solutions for a maintenance agreement for the public safety radio system equipment.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turnbull.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderwoman Jones. Alderwoman Kendrick.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Motion for a second reading?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Move the bill number seventy-eight fifty-five be placed on second reading.
Thank you, is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Bill number seven-eight-five-five, an ordinance authorizing payment to Motorola Solutions for a maintenance agreement for the public safety radio system equipment.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion for final passage?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Turnbull.
I move the bill number seven-eight-five-five be placed on third reading and said bill be enacted.
Final passage.
Um, final passage, sorry, and said bill be enacted.
Thank you, is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
A second.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Turnbull.
Aye.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderwoman Jones. Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Ordinance number seven-five-nine-three.
So bill number seven-eight-five-five has passes now, ordinance seven-five-nine-three. Is there a motion on bill number seven-eight-five-six?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
Will the bill number seven-eight-five-six be placed on its first reading?
Thank you, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Second.
Thank you.
Bill number seven-eight-five-six, an ordinance authorizing payment to Public Safety Solutions MO LLC for GTech Mobile Data Terminals and Havas Docking Stations.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Captain Rogers, could you just kind of explain the difference between this ordinance and the one right before it?
The one that this one be replacing me?
Yes.
So this was previously approved through ordinance back in April, before, you know, specific to the distributor of ESU Pursuits. Before the order could be processed, they became no longer associated with the GTech parent company. So they identified a new distributor, which is Public Safety Solutions out of Springfield, and they've provided us the exact same pricing, same specifications as the previous one.
Gotcha, so there was enough of a change that we have to do a new ordinance and not amend the previous ordinance?
I can jump in, Alderman Maloney, we had this conversation with legal and, and the administration and police department. That ordinance allowed to engage in a contract with a specific company.
Okay.
This is the legal protocols that we went through, yeah, pragmatically, you don't have to do this, but we wanted to make sure that we're doing everything right so that we're engaging with the right name.
Good.
That's what is, that's what changed.
Thank you very much.
And finally, Carrie, anything you'd like to clean up so that we, we get the, the real story?
That's right, the way our ordinances are drafted, it ordains the city to enter into an agreement with a specific company, and that's no longer what we're doing, so I was asked if we had to do an ordinance, and I, I'm, it's me being a bit of a stickler, I think, but I'm the one that said yes, so I think, yeah.
It's nice having the attorney in the room. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion for final passage?
Second.
Oh, that was first reading? Oh, okay, roll call, I'm ready to go.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderman Ray Maloney.
Aye.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Aye.
Alderwoman Jones. Alderman Rousey. Alderwoman Turnbull.
Aye.
Motion for second reading?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Move the bill number seventy-eight fifty-six be placed on its second reading.
Thank you, is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
Second.
Thank you.
Bill number seven-eight-five-six, an ordinance authorizing payment to Public Safety Solutions MO LLC for GTech Mobile Data Terminals and Havas Docking Stations.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion for final passage?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Turnbull.
See if I can get it right this time. I move that we, yeah, I just went blank. I move that we place bill number seven-eight-five-six on final passage and said bill be enacted.
Oh, thank you, is there a second?
A second.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
I second.
Thank you, been moved and second, any discussion, we're gonna get the roll call.
Alderwoman Turnbull.
Aye.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderwoman Jones. Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Ordinance number seven-five-nine-four.
So bill number seven-eight-five-six has passes now, ordinance seven-five-nine-four. Is there a motion on bill number seven-eight-five-seven?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
I move that we put bill number seven-eight-five-seven on its first reading.
Thank you, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Second.
Thank you.
Bill number seven-eight-five-seven, an ordinance approving a zoning map amendment for eight-two-zero-three East Outer Belt Road and parcel number sixty-eight-nine-hundred-zero-one-zero-four-zero-two-one-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero in Grandview, Jackson County, Missouri.
Thank you, and would staff come and give us an update on this one and the recommendation as well?
So this is the zoning map amendment that we discussed at the public hearing two weeks ago regarding eighty-two oh-three East Outer Belt Road and the adjacent parcel around it totaling about twenty-eight, twenty-eight acres. The current zoning is PD Plan District, that is the mixed-use zoning, it allows for any of the permitted uses in any of our residential districts and any of our commercial and office districts, be that single-family residential through apartment complexes and literally any business you could think of that is allowed to operate here, which is anything legal for the most part. This current zoning is supported by the Comprehensive Plans Future Land Use Map, Grandview Twenty-Thirty, it's supported by the M-one-fifty Corridor Framework Plan, and it is also supported by other goals that are, that are seeking to increase rooftops and restaurant and shopping options within the city. The zoning map amendment is requesting that these two parcels be rezoned to R-one-A, which is large lot, single-family residential. The only development option in R-one-A is a large lot, single-family home, so if the zoning map amendment is adopted, it takes the permitted uses for these two parcels from almost everything to maybe two homes. These two homes are on the corner of the intersection of M-one-fifty and Kelly and are at the entrance to the city if you're coming in or out on M-one-fifty. Staff has recommended denial as it is inconsistent with adopted plans and goals. The Planning Commission recommended denial unanimously at their hearing in May as it was not in furtherance of the Comprehensive Plan and is not in alignment with any adopted plans or goals.
Any, anything else?
I think Emily did a wonderful job summarizing that, the only other thing that I would add is that we recently engaged the services of Kimley Horn to assist the city with updating the M-one-fifty corridor plan. A part of that will be to conduct an economic analysis of the corridor to help determine what is the best and highest use for the land along that corridor. And I believe what we will get out of that plan will help to inform us in terms of what may be the best zoning if any changes need to be made to these parcels.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, oh, yes.
I'm trying to understand just a couple of things here, and I guess I'm a visual learner, so this is either for Randy or Emily here. Can you guys explain the difference between like an overlay district and how the Grandview Twenty-Thirty plan kind of comes into effect here? Because I know, I guess I'm a visual learner or visual thinker here, I'm thinking of layers. So right now, there's a zoning on the property, then there is the recommendation that's put forth by the Twenty-Thirty plan, correct? And it's not an overlay district, but it goes into the, the thought process of what would be approved through the conceptual development review process, is that right?
That is correct, I, I think you summarized kind of what those different layers are fairly well. I will just add to that kind of an overlay district, and we do have some overlay districts here in the city are sort of another layer to that onion, if you will, that add additional requirements for things like facade treatment, paint colors, landscaping, those sorts of things are the additional things that an overlay district would have.
Gotcha, and then the other question I had, I forgot, I didn't think to ask this last time here. The city of Kansas City across the street, I guess it's direct neighbors, but I guess there is a buffer of a street, so I'll be generous and say ten yards, you know, even though it's a narrow street there, what is the zoning for the property ten yards away?
To the east.
Yes.
It's R-eighty, which their zoning districts are different than ours, but it is essentially one home per eighty thousand square feet of property. It's very, very large lot, single-family residential. Kansas City hasn't done a lot on their, their portion of the corridor.
So is it fair to say R-one-A is probably our close? So, is it fair to say R1A is probably our closest matching zoning to that? And you said R80, like R80?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Rousey.
Yes.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Kendrick.
Um, no.
Alderman Turnbull.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Nay.
And the mayor's no as well. Is there a motion for a second reading?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Move that Bill Number 78, or 7857 be placed on its second reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Bill Number 7857, an ordinance approving a zoning map amendment for 8203 East Outer Belt Road and parcel number 68-900-01-04-02-1-00-000 in Grandview, Jackson County, Missouri.
I think you missed a zero.
Did I miss one? Probably.
Thank you. Further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Randy, just on the, you know, we're updating, we just approved that ordinance to update the plan, what's the timeline on the execution of that update?
For the entire plan, the timeline is nine months. And I will say their economic analysis, person has begun his work for that.
All right. Thank you.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Nay.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Kendrick.
Nay.
Alderman Jones.
No.
Alderman Turnbull.
Aye.
Motion for final passage?
Mayor.
Mayor.
You gotta break the tie.
Mayors nay. I'm sorry. Mayors nay. Motion for final passage?
Mayor.
Alderman Jones.
I move that Bill 7857 be placed on its final passage and said bill be enacted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Alderman Jones.
No.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Turnbull.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Nay.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Kendrick.
Nay.
And the mayor's no as well.
Ordinance Number 7595.
So, this ordinance does not pass. The next area is other business. Let's start with Alderman Jones. Let's start with other business.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Okay. Alderman Kendrick.
I have nothing at this time.
Alderman Maloney.
Yeah, I noticed something today here. I didn't get a chance to email. I was over in Lee's Summit in one of their parks and rec buildings and they had a table that had Narcan, like available for free, and fentanyl testing strips. And I thought that was a very, and I took a picture, I'll try to send it to you here later, but I was kinda curious if we could reach out to Lee's Summit to figure out how they got that to where they were passing it out to anybody as needed. So, if they bought it outright or if they went through Eastern Jack's Health Department or something, I thought that was a pretty nice service to have. It's one of those things, I hope no one needs to have it, but if they do, I'm glad it's free and it's an option, it's there and we should offer that same thing.
Please share the pictures, you two, and we'll figure it out, just for the board and the audience. We do get those for free from the Jackson County Health Department. We have a partnership through one of the universities, I can't think of what university that was, but I don't know if they're purchasing theirs, but we no longer purchase ours.
So, when we get them for free, is it just for first responders to kinda have not enough to actually pass out?
That is correct. That is correct. And we have them in Police Department and Fire Department and they're equipped and they know how to use it too.
Awesome. That's all I have, sir. Alderman Randolph.
I don't have anything.
Alderman Turnbull.
Um, excuse me. Yeah, I have a couple. First off, I wanna say thank you all for staff and mayor for the town hall last night with Senator Patty Lewis. And I understand Representative Ealy had been here and Representative Mark Sharp were here. It was really a nice crowd and in the process. My number two item is former Alderman Joe Runyon's approached me and wants to know when the grass is gonna be cut over at Rock City because it's a mess under the bridge. So, I'm just the messenger.
Thanks for delivering the message. We'll take care of it.
And there's another spot, which is, I think it's Marywood across the bridge that's been brought to my attention over there, John, in Ward Three.
Yeah, it's a ticket. Like, our crews, we already have a ticket. It is going to be, even though it's not our responsibility really, but it creates a hazard for us and a liability, so we'll take care of that. It's on their list for tomorrow.
Thank you very much. That's all I have, ma'am.
I only got one thing. Jamal?
Yes, sir.
What are we on the schedule to get some signs around this place?
What type of signs?
Well, it'd be nice if we had a sign that said police outside down by the Police Department. You know, some people come in and ask, you know, don't know where the restrooms are.
Yep, yep, yep.
You know, I mean, little things like that. We got this nice building, but we don't have the little add of things. And I know we're doing, you're doing the budget and everything, I understand that. I'd just like to know where we at.
Okay. So, on those big signs, we have plans for the exterior walls on both ends, Police Department and the City Hall or Municipal Services Building. They are at the design phase and the design is done and we're getting pricing as we speak, so those are gonna happen. Interior signs, we just went through two layers of it because we created a lot more space, right?